To seek, Lord Jesus, what is the heart of God over all of these situations? And Father, we pray that upon this, Lord God, we can walk away from here tonight, knowing that God is watching over us, that He is here to prosper our county, and God to lead us forward into the place that You would have us to be. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Edgewood. Appreciate it. We're gonna go ahead and move to the next agenda item, which is approval of minutes for the regular council meeting that's scheduled Tuesday, September 17th, 2019, as well as the special call meeting that was held Tuesday, September 24th, 2019. We have motion.
Second.
And for properly motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor of approval of the minutes, please signify by saying aye. Opposers, the same. Next on our item, our list of agenda items and ordinance is for the second reading of ordinance 2019-10. That ordinance is an ordinance to consider amending Williamsburg County Budget Ordinance number 2019-5 by providing a new section, 9.1, as follows. Pursuit to the authority granted to the county council for Williamsburg County under the Constitution statutes and laws of the state of South Carolina, the county council is assessing at one time, temporary emergency fee in the amount to be determined at final reading by county council to meet the current budget needs. Do we have motion?
Motion for second reading?
We have second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the second, or reading of the second, the second reading of ordinance 2019-10, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, the same. Yes, have this so ordered. We're also, next item on the agenda is the first reading of ordinance 2019-11, and that one is an ordinance providing for the transfer of authority for conducting municipal elections in the town of Saki to Williamsburg County Board of Registration and Election Commission. We just need a motion.
Motion for first reading, Ms. Edgewood. Motion for first reading.
We have second. First reading ordinance 2019-12, for the, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of one or more incentive agreements by and among Williamsburg County, South Carolina, and the company known to the county as Project Flag, as sponsors, and one or more existing or be formed or acquired subsidies, or affiliated or related entities, and one or more sponsor affiliates to provide for a fee in lieu of a valorum, the laurium tax incentive to provide for a special source for revenue credits and other related materials. Need a motion.
Motion for first reading?
Next item up is our resolutions, and we have resolution number 2019-14, an agreement between the county and hybrid engineering company for the Saki Swamp Bridge replacement located on Luddy's Creek Road. We'll just give you a little bit of history. During Hurricane Florence, the Saki Bridge was destroyed. In an effort for us to try to get FEMA to do reimbursement until we still does a new bridge better than the one that we had, we have to take certain actions. One of those actions is that we, we hired an engineering company to do some of the preliminary design so that that information can be submitted to FEMA. We have been, this has been a long time waiting. Our citizens in that area have had, waited a long time for this bridge to even get to this point. We petitioned FEMA and pretty much begged FEMA to allow us the ability to have a grant for the engineering costs because at first that was not included in, in cost for them. And they graciously allowed us the opportunity to pursue a grant. So that is at a 75%, 25% match, of course, and they ended up giving us approximately, a total amount was approved was $92,190, of which they are paying for the $69,142.56, and we have come up with $23,047.50. We were able to find the match through various sources to include our public works department to be able to make that match. So that's a little history behind the Saki Bridge. Need a motion?
We need a motion.
Yes, I do.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of resolution 2019-14, please signify by saying aye. Opposers, the same. We have, the next resolution is resolution number 2019-15, and that is a resolution identifying a project to satisfy the requirements of Title 12, Chapter 44 of the South Carolina Code, so as to allow investment expenditures conferred by a company known to the county as Project Flag.
Motion to adopt a real resolution? Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposers, the same. The next item for discussion is our committee report. The Finance Committee met September 18th, 2019. We had an appearance from our interim EMS director, Ms. Jeanne Crane, and basically she was coming to do a renewal for the mutual aid agreement with First Choice Ambulance, Ambulance and Company, which they provide our ambulance services for Williamsburg County citizens. The committee recommended approval of the renewal agreement and to be forwarded to full council. Do we have a motion?
There's a move. There's a movement here.
We have a second.
Second.
We have properly second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the minutes, or, all those in favor for the approval of the Finance Committee's recommendation, please signify by saying aye. Opposers, the same. It is so ordered. Under the supervisor's report, it is always a pleasure to be able to recognize our employees and departments for the good things that they do. I'm gonna have at this time that the Williamsburg County Sheriff, Steven Gardner, come up to discuss the employee of the month.
It's a great pleasure that I get to come up here, tell you how I look at it and start it. One of the things that brought on us going through CPR resuscitation training is the fact that, you know, in today's time, you're accountable for everything you do because we got those devices to hit or call everything you say and do. So when you don't do something, guess what? You're just liable as not doing it. Anyhow, so we had not been doing it part of our in-service training, CPR training. So that's something that we instill because, hey, you can't just stand there and off and say, hey, I'm not gonna do anything because I'm not trained to do it. That doesn't look good either. So we started doing that, but lo and behold, never thought that we would have to have someone have to use for training. But it's great that we did do that. This person along with using their training also gives a lot of great qualities, and that's Ms. Eunice Austin. Anyhow. But Ms. Eunice is a very great person. She's always willing to help anybody. Anybody that she can help if there's something that she sees, great ideas. She's our county sheriff. Awesome person. I'll give you a chance to say a few words.
Thank you once again. I'm just lost in words. It's thank you. Thank you, thank you. Yes, you're very welcome. Yeah, very beautiful.
No, you're fine here. Carol, come right there. Then you get on the other end. You're not gonna hide. Alright, everybody, keep back, everybody back there, walk that way, one step. There we go. Alright, on the count of three. One, two, let me look. And one more. One, two. Thank you.
It is my pleasure to be able to say a few words on behalf of the Department of the Month. Now, this department is responsible for approximately 56 county buildings. They have, they are what we consider our fixers, our cleaners. They keep up with everything that we do. Without them, this building wouldn't, and these facilities would be looking real rough. And oftentimes, we get into situations where we don't, we don't remember to at least thank those who are responsible for doing something that some feel are so unknown, but without them, we couldn't do what we do here to serve our citizens. They serve us and they serve our citizens. So with that being said, I'd like to congratulate the Williamsburg County Building and Browns and Maintenance Department under the leadership of Director Jesse Parker. Director Parker, would you like to say something? Come on up, bring your people, we can get a photo.
Just to be sure, I'll let you just say thank you for recognizing us. Sometimes we are the ones that do all the things around here that nobody else wants to do. And so really, I appreciate you recognizing them because they are the ones that usually they'll stick out and give.
Everybody in the back, step that way. There you go. Alright, everybody, we'll take two. On the count of three. One, two. Yeah, you don't have to take a three. One, two, three, four, five. Thank you. There you go. Congratulations.
Also, under the supervisor's report, we just wanted to report and let all our citizens know is that Mr. Brian Newark, our county financial advisor, will make his annual debt presentation to county council on our regularly scheduled meeting for November 4th. He'll be here. Also, members of council, the holiday time is upon us, and our county employees are asking about the Christmas holiday. Now, we have two options. Christmas falls on Wednesday this year. So the option is to either give the two days before Christmas or the two days after. But I don't think I'm gonna get out of here if we don't make some kind of decision as to the two county holidays, or the county holidays that we're going to be exercising this year.
Now, so by recommend giving the 26th and 27th.
Alright, so we have decided at that point? Okay. They were polled, right? Oh, okay, I think that you made it by county employees. Okay, so pretty much what's on the table right now is the option for, we will have Christmas Day off, which is the 25th, and it is a Wednesday, and also the 26th and the 27th. So that gives county employees a long holiday weekend off after the, after the holiday, the named day of the holiday. So we just need a vote. Motion and a vote.
I make a motion that we give the county employees the 26th and the 27th.
Second. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the county being closed for observation on the 20, observation of the Christmas holiday for the 26th and 27th, please signify by saying aye. Opposers, the same. It is so ordered. Now, I don't have to worry about my car being messed up, and now they know. But the next piece of information I need to give you is canceling the council, the cancellation of the council meeting that's scheduled for October 15th due to the special call meeting that we're held, who will be hosting with public hearing that is scheduled for October 17th. At 6:00 p.m. 17 is the Thursday. And then also today, again, that the public hearing will be held as well. I, in your packets, I have the draft that we just issued, I believe, the draft copy, I'm issuing it now, a draft copy of the RFP as promised regarding the county restructuring project. So you have the draft copy. We still working on making sure we finalize a few items, but this is what is gonna actually get the ball rolling, rolling for us. I've also submitted a copy to our county attorney for his review before this is put out for the, if y'all have any questions, please, for free. Alright, our next order of discussion is our appearances. I'm asking that we limit the appearance presentations to one to three minutes, and please also be advised that there will not be any public discussion of donations. You can make your request in writing to the clerk of council. So our first person up is Mr. Carl Furman. He's with Karen and Sharon.
It's good to see everybody, Madam Secretary, County Council, Mr. Flair, it's good to be here. I was supposed to be before you, last August, just past August, but I was called and, and I'm meeting with council. But it's good to be with you tonight. Just to let you know, everything's going real good with Karen and Sharon. We had a different year. We had a bumpy road, and y'all can understand what I'm getting ready to say. We lost a $25,000 grant, we lost a $10,000 grant. We also did not get the provisions that we would normally have gotten here. So in a case like that, and you're the ones that been here before and has heard me say this, the only way you get through a situation like that is to be prepared. We were prepared. I had bibles by the cases stacked up on pallets. We didn't have to buy any of the bibles this year. We have, we just had to sell them. The food came at the end of the month, that food bank is packed with food. We especially keep it that way in this time of the year because of hurricanes. And a hurricane comes, we go to it. Doesn't matter if it hits here, Myrtle Beach, or wherever it hits, we go to it. If you don't go directly to it, we send financial help. So we try to be prepared all the time. But I just come back, when Mr. Flair asked me the other day, and she called me and asked me to come, I said, you betcha I'll come. Because the reason I wanted to come is to say thank you. We have been partners for high, 10, 12 years, a lot of, lot of years. And it's good to know because I'll tell you, Williamsburg County is the only county that we work with that helps us in this way. And you can't say thank you too many times. And I know that our situation will rectify itself. You know, we have bumpy roads, all of us. We had one, other people have. But things will straighten out. And if you're doing the Lord's work, you can count on that 100%, and that's what we're doing. We live in a wonderful place, and the Lord took care of us 22 years, this is what we're going on our 23rd year. And we could not do it without people like y'all, people like y'all, other the partners helping us. So we just, I wanted to make this trip tonight to say we appreciate what y'all doing, and we love you for it. Thank you, God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Newark. Next, we have an appearance from Ms. Renee Carson Graham. She's the Cickle Cell Anemia Disease Society. Ms. Renee, we see her. Okay. We're gonna move on to Ms. Frida Cox. She's with, Ms. Frida Cox, MSW, she's with PD Coalition. I don't see her either. Okay, and a representative's here.
Hello, my name is Adra Cooper. I'm the volunteer coordinator for PD Coalition. I'm here to bring awareness to domestic violence. October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. DV just isn't abuse from an intimate partner, it's also emotional, sexual, and psychological abuse. Did you know that every minute, approximately 20 people are physically abused by a partner in the U.S.? The prevalence of domestic violence throughout the country continues to grow. Just last month, South Carolina was ranked number five in the most dangerous states in the nation for women, where women are most likely to die at the hands of their partner. And as a community, we act, we wanna say, for PD Coalition, we wanna thank the community for continuously supporting us as an organization, fighting against this cause, and also supporting us in the process that we're building our new building, or Two Courthouse Square. And of course, to continue to support our donations and the local victim services that we provide. And if you see someone experiencing domestic violence, or if you have your suspicions, to say something because that's the only way that we can end this cause. Thank you.
Thank you. The next appearance is by Drew Godwin with Topelo, in and from the Topelo Community. Hope I'm topelo.
Thank you, members of county council, for allowing me up here. I'm Drew Godwin. I live in the northern part of Williamsburg County. I didn't know exactly what to call it. I guess I, Tupelo Bay runs through it. But what I'm here for tonight is to talk about street racing. We, I own a pretty large farm, and, you know, we live in the country, and we enjoy the quiet time, right? In the afternoons, you won't be sitting in the sand hunting, or whatever it is, sitting on the front porch of our clubhouse, or whatever it is, and enjoying the quiet. But right now, we have a problem with street racing on Smith Swamp Road. It's a quarter mile stretch of road that they are racing there every day, every night, sometimes at midnight, sometimes in the middle of the day, especially on holidays and so forth. It's actually a newly paved road. If you don't mind, I'll hand you some pictures that will show you what they're doing to the road. Their trash is being left out. There's been a car burned up because it caught fire out there. It's my understanding someone was shot out there and taken to the hospital versus PFP. Now, I have hunters and things that are coming out the woods, they can't exit the woods because they're racing up and down the road. They'll actually block the road off and not allow anybody in there during that time. We've made the phone calls to the Sheriff's Department. We've made the phone calls to the Highway Patrol. Highway Patrol says, or Sheriff's Department says Highway Patrol calls a racing. We call the Sheriff's Department because of loud noises. It's a noise complaint. I understand the Sheriff's Department, Highway Patrols are both stretched thin. I mean, they only have so many officers to do this. What I'm asking is that we place a speed bump midway at the quarter mile. If there's a problem with paying for the speed bump, I'll be happy to pay for the speed bump if you want to. That will cut out the, the street racing because they can't, there's not enough room at the very beginning to finish their quarter mile before they have to slam on brakes to miss the speed bump. Speed bumps not will cause a whole lot of people a lot of problems on Smith Swamp Road. If you're unsure where Smith Swamp is, it's between Patty Road and Bueller Road behind Daniel. And so, but it's, this is happening all the time. And we're caught, if, if they check our records at the Sheriff's Department, if they check our records at Highway Patrol, they'll have my name, they'll have my son's name, Matt. And it's, it's just, we, you wouldn't want that near your house. You wouldn't wanna go out there on your front porch sipping coffee, or whatever it is, in the evenings and stuff, and have to hear those loud cars and things. You know, they meet at one of the truck shops, that's where they get all their vets and stuff. They'll be stacking up there, they'll take two cars down there, run the race, or either they'll be having road completely lined up, and none of them on either, of any of the property on either side of the road. I'm not sure what those people in the end of the road do near Bueller Road, so if you could help me out, I would really appreciate it. I'd be happy if you can give me advice as to what direction to take next. I just need some help from you, the, the county council on this, because it's just, it's dangerous. It's dangerous out there, when they're out there. And there's more of them, so it kinda keeps people from actually, they'll turn around and go another way. They'll cut through Thomas and their road, which cuts through my, the middle of my farm. So anything that you can do to help out with this, I'd appreciate. It's a shame that the road has turned into that. It was just paved last year. It was repainted. And it's a shame that it looks like that. Basically, all you can see is rubber on the road. They'll, you know, they'll do the burning on it and so forth to heat the tires up and so forth. So I just need your help and, and your advice and your, and your guidance. So thank you very much.
We're gonna get a Smith.
Smith Swamp Road. It's behind Daniel Plastics, runs to the end of Bueller Road. Bueller Road runs beside Daniel, and to the end before it hits the dirt portion, take a ride on the Smith Swamp, which connects Patty Road on the southern side.
For this street fund, it is maintained by SCPT, and what we can do is at that point is just reach out to Mr. Lee and Stan and go from there.
But I'd be happy to pay for it.
Thank you. The next person, or the next appearance is by Ms. Alicia Patrick. She's with Williamsburg County First Step.
Good afternoon, supervisor and council members. I stand today to simply say thank you for your continued support as we strive to advance the children of Williamsburg County to level the playing field across the state and the nation. Last year, in Williamsburg County, we, Williamsburg County had 1,558 children ages birth to five years old. Of that count, 64% of the young children live in poverty or low-income households. 60% of the kindergarteners are considered not ready for school. However, we are making a difference. Every time we show success, it seems they move to finish line. Our impact for Williamsburg County First Step, we serve- We served three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven children and adults last year. Dolly Parton Imagination Library distributed over six thousand books to over five hundred children in our county. Countdown to kindergarten served thirty-six children with a total of two hundred and sixteen home visits and school visits. Childcare training was provided to three hundred and fifty childcare providers in Williamsburg County. Parent-child Home Program served forty families, a total of one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven home visits. But I'll stop there because all this can go on and on. I invite you, however, to be a part of our annual meeting and training on November thirteenth, six P M, at the Williamsburg County District Annex Building. We rely on a community of partners, donors, and volunteers like yourself who believe in a brighter future for our children and our families in all counties. Again, thank you for all you do for the citizens of Williamsburg County, especially our children birth to five years old. Thank you.
In Williamsburg, German? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of German, please signify by saying aye. Opposers, the same, we are adjourned, thank you.